Welcome to the May 1st, 2012 meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have a roll call, please?
Council members. Council members Freeman.
Here.
Manukian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Quintero.
Here.
The flag salute will be led by our city clerk.
By the city clerk. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, Republic, where it stands, on the nation. Justice for all.
All right, and please remain standing for the invocation. The strongest bond of human sympathy outside of the family relation should be one uniting all working people of all nations and tongues and kindreds. These words were spoken by President Abraham Lincoln, and since today is a day when many working people around the world commemorate solidarity with one another, let us use this opportunity to say a prayer of thanks. We pray in gratitude for all those who work day in and day out to run this city, its businesses, its schools, and every other industry and field that contributes to our vitality and welfare. We pray that those who have worked, and we pray especially for those who are facing the hardships of unemployment and may be destitute. We pray for their relief and welfare, as well as for their families. We also remember to pray for those employed in our nation's armed services as they continue to defend our nation and risk their lives for our security. Bless all those who earn an honest living by the sweat of their brow from those who work and from those whose work we benefit now and always. Amen.
May we have your report?
The agenda for the May 1st, 2012 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, April 26th, 2012, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
What's next?
Next is presentation and appointments at 3:00 A.M. is the agenda preview for the meetings of May 8th, 2012.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council for May 8th, for the Glendale Housing Authority, we have no business agenda items. For the Glendale Successor Agency to commence at 3:00 P.M., we have one item, Director of Community Development Strategies for Implementing Successor Agency Projects Enforcable Obligations. For the evening of May 8th, for the Glendale City Council meeting to commence at 6:00 P.M., we have a few consent items, Director of Community Services and Parks, the Mountain Dew Trail and Catalina Verdugo Trail Construction Project at the Glendale Sports Complex, Director of Public Works, this is regarding the 2011 Storm Drain Construction and Replacement Project, Director of Public Works, this is an emergency sewer and storm drain repair program. Under action items, we only have one item, Director of Public Works, this is regarding the Brand Library and Art Center renovation project, Spec. Number 3447. And that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Next, please.
At 3:00 B. is a presentation of the findings of the Bob Hope Airport Community Opinion Survey by Dan Fager, Executive Director of the Airport Authority, and Paul Goodwin of Goodwin Simon Strategic Research.
Mr. Fager, it is a pleasure to have you here this evening so that the public in Glendale can understand what we're trying to accomplish at Burbank Bob Hope Airport.
Mayor Quintero, it's always a pleasure to come before the Glendale City Council and members of council. I come here today to tell you about a community opinion survey that was conducted in the month of February to voters within the cities of Burbank, Glendale, Pasadena, and a portion of Los Angeles immediately around the airport. The intent of the survey was to gauge the opinions of people who live in the tri-cities about the airport and how the airport affects their quality of life and how the airport affects them financially and personally, to understand and set a stage for our ability to move forward with planning for a vision of the future. I'd like to introduce Paul Goodwin of Goodwin Simon Strategic Research, who was in charge of conducting that community opinion survey. And Paul, if you'd be so kind to share the results.
Thank you, Dan. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. It's an honor to be here, and I appreciate the opportunity. I will quickly go through the results of our survey, and please feel free to ask any questions as I'm going through it or when it's completed. So just quickly about the methodology, we did a survey of voters in Glendale, Pasadena, Burbank, and then areas of Los Angeles immediately adjacent to the Bob Hope Airport. We did interviews in Armenian, in English, and in Spanish, and we conducted, we prepared the survey after doing focus groups and some one-on-one interviews with community leaders in the area around the airport. So I'm going to show you Glendale results. I will mention the study area-wide results where appropriate, and we have presented this to the city councils in Burbank and Pasadena previously, and now here in Glendale. So let's start with a quick overview of the findings, and then I'll go back and show you some of the details. So the first thing is that most voters in Glendale and across the study area feel very positively about the Bob Hope Airport. This is quite different, as you'll see, than maybe people feel about LAX. Certainly, if you were to ask people who live near LAX, it would be different attitude. They're also very familiar with the airport. A lot of your residents use the airport. Airport noise and traffic are not seen as major concerns by most voters in Glendale, and for that matter, in Burbank as well. There is, there are relatively few voters who are currently aware of some of the issues affecting the airport that might lead to the need for a replacement of the existing terminal. So absent that awareness, when we asked people about it, we got fairly, we got a plurality in favor of it. In fact, I think in Glendale, close to a majority, but not a big divide. However, when we told them more about some of the reasons that people are looking at the possibility of a replacement terminal, support grew really strongly into three to one in favor of it. Voters do express some concern about will a new terminal retain that ease and convenience of the existing terminal that people really like? Who's going to pay for it was another issue that came up, and will it lead to more flights? So we're going to look at all these questions in a second. So first, let's take a look at a question about familiarity with Bob Hope Airport. First of all, you can see that in Glendale, only 38 percent of your voters said they had not taken, not been to the airport in 2011. So 62 percent, about 62 percent of your voters had, have used the airport in the past year. And if you look on the upper left, you can see that about 1 in 6 have used it at least five times in the last year. So that's a fairly heavy use of the airport by your residents. We asked them if they have a favorable or unfavorable view of the airport. So you can see 80 percent of Glendale voters say they have a favorable opinion about the Bob Hope Airport, only 5 percent unfavorable. That's as close as unanimous as you get in public attitudes on virtually any topic. A more divided viewpoint about LAX, I might add that residents of Glendale had views very similar to what we found across the study region for both LAX and Bob Hope Airport. Is it a good neighbor? Is it a good neighbor to the community surrounding it? So you can see that in Burbank, which is closest to the airport, you had 85 percent who said that, yeah, the Bob Hope Airport is a good neighbor. Just 9 percent said it's not a good neighbor. In Glendale, the number who said it was a good neighbor was lower, but you can see that's exactly corresponding with the green column on the right of people who said, I don't know. So it's not a repudiation of the airport, it's simply lack of familiarity, and you can see that effect is even stronger in Pasadena. So you have, you know, just overwhelming majorities of people in all these cities who say it's a good neighbor. Noise and traffic. So we asked voters to rate on a 1 to 5 scale how serious they felt traffic generated by the airport was, and 18 percent in Glendale said they felt traffic from Bob Hope Airport was serious, which would be a 1 or 2 rating, 50, I'm sorry, 4 or 5 rating. 52 percent said it was not a serious problem, with the rest being neutral. So you have, you know, about 3 to 1, not serious to serious, and similar results from the noise issue. Just for contrast, this is really not that, this is very similar to what we got across the entire study area. Just for contrast, you can see, we asked them about unemployment, and you have 44 percent who say that they felt unemployment is a serious problem in Glendale. How much does noise from the airport affect you personally? So we had 14 percent in Glendale who said it affects them a great deal or some, another 15 percent who said, yeah, but just a little, and 69 percent who said it doesn't affect them at all. So again, and, you know, even in Burbank, we had only 23 percent who said it affected them a great deal or some. So throughout, a 4 in Burbank said it didn't affect them that much, and in here in Glendale, you had, what, 69 and 15, so 84 percent who say it does not affect them even some. We've been asked specifically about nighttime noise, has it gotten better or worse? You can see that only 4 percent say it's gotten worse in the last few years, 14 percent say it's gotten better, and everybody else says it's the same, or I'm not sure. So we've, we're certainly seeing, and we saw this across the study area, about 3 to 1 who say nighttime noise has gotten better in the last few years. How congested is traffic near the entrance to the airport? 6 percent in Glendale said it was very congested, 37 somewhat congested, 43 percent who said it was very or somewhat congested. The interesting thing is that in Burbank, these numbers were lower, and in Pasadena, these numbers were higher. So the farther you are from the airport, the more your sense is that traffic around the airport is a problem, those closest to it are least likely to think that.
Could that be perception as opposed to reality?
That would be my guess. Exactly. So we asked about a possible replacement terminal. The specific language we read to voters was, one option being discussed would replace the current passenger terminal with a new terminal. This new terminal would have the same number of passenger gates as the current terminal and would be in a different location on the airport property. When we read them this language, we had 48 percent in Glendale in favor, 34 percent opposed, so nearly a majority, a solid plurality, but you can see that a third said, no, I'd be opposed to it. This is quite similar to what we got across the study area, which was 48 in favor, 37 opposed. Well, what would concern you, we asked, if the airport replaced the current terminal? You can see that by far, the biggest response to this was, nothing would concern me. So 49 percent said, I have no concern. But we had some people who said something about cost, and when we looked at the actual responses, people were concerned that it would cost taxpayers money to replace the airport, which in fact is not the case. So that was the biggest thing. And then the second thing, which was quite interesting, was this sense of attachment to the existing terminal. People really love the existing terminal, so we don't want it, we don't want it to change, we don't want the parking to be less convenient. So small numbers of people did mention some of these issues. And this is an example of some of the actual verbatim responses that we got. Where will the money come from? Why change it? It might create noise and traffic, there's no need to change it. So remember, this, these are people's responses without having heard anything about why there's been some discussion in this city and across the region about the possibility of a replacement We found that there is very low levels of awareness of some of these issues that are at the foundation of this discussion. So 2 out of, about 31 percent knew that some of the terminal is more than 80 years old, but 2 out of 3 roughly did not know that. Virtually nobody knew that the terminal's location does not meet current federal standards for separation from the runway, and only 10 percent knew that some of the terminal building does not meet current seismic safety standards. When we informed people about this and told them that, you know, assume a new terminal was farther from the runway, met seismic safety standards, and had no more gates than the current terminal, would you favor or oppose a replacement terminal? You can see, in Glendale, we went from 48, 34 to 67, 21, more than 3 to 1. More than 3 to 1. And there are probably not many issues facing the city where, if you did a poll, you would see 3 to 1 support. Just by the nature of things, most issues tend to be fairly evenly divided. This is a pretty strong response. What would be most important to you? We read them these three statements, and you can see, safety in Glendale was the number one issue for people, and jobs was the second most important issue. This varied from city to city. In Pasadena, for example, the jobs issue was as important as the safety issue, but they're fairly close. We read some positive and negative statements to voters about this, some of the things that opponents have been saying, for example, opponents of a replacement terminal, well, it could result in more traffic, could be more flights, more nighttime noise, and it's really not necessary. And you can see, it's not that clear in this chart, but you can see that the response to the negative statements, to the opposition statements, were not nearly as important to people as the positive statements. But when we read people, both these positive and negative statements, we ended up, we then asked, well, now how do you feel about this possibility? And you can see, we still ended up at 63 percent in favor of a replacement terminal, even after they had heard statements from, that people who are opposed to it might make. So let me just say, we, as of midnight last night, we finished the last phase of our outreach process, which was an online questionnaire, and we got about roughly 1,000 people responding to it. I'm now in the process of going through all the responses, and we will post the results of that at bobhopeairportsurvey.com. But it was an opportunity for people who were not interviewed, not selected randomly for the telephone interview, to have their voices heard, and certainly, a lot of people did that. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have, and feel free.
Are there any questions or comments?
I think we've heard it all, 3 of us.
Yeah, commissioners have. Well, let me say, I was very, I shouldn't say very surprised, but I was fairly surprised at the kind of positive reaction when the survey took place. Very scientific, this gentleman obviously is a professional in the field, and he is a resident of Burbank, as well as Glendale and Pasadena, obviously, are very much in step with what we're trying to accomplish, what Dan Fager, our executive director, has tried to accomplish since he's been at the airport for many years, but he was appointed a few years ago. And I think we're headed in the right direction with the residents and the elected officials, and hopefully, we're going to wind up in a positive situation. And is this, my question, I guess, is that, obviously, residents of all three cities and Los Angeles, North Hollywood, and all the, Toluca Lake, all the other joint communities, they can't continue to participate in this process and let us know what they feel about what we're doing, correct?
I will let Dan address this, but I believe there will be an ongoing outreach effort.
The next step in the process is for us to have a very extensive outreach program with the community. The intent is to develop the vision of the future through a consensus-based process. That means over the next probably 12 to 18 months, we'll be talking to the community, we'll be having planning charrettes, we will bring information to the community and bring information back to the commission and the cities as we try and figure out, well, what should we do with the old terminal? What should we do with all the acreage of land that we have that's currently lying fallow and not paying property taxes to the community? What should we do about transportation? How do we integrate transportation into our master plan for the airport? All of those features will be done through a very, very open public process. The intent is not to shove a plan down the throat of the community, but to work with the community and actually do something that the community will embrace.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Next, please.
Next item on the agenda at 3:00 C. is a proclamation designating May 2012 as Historic Preservation Month.
Okay, I see staff members and members of the commission coming to the podium. I'll read the proclamation. Whereas the National Historic Preservation Act adopted by the United States Congress and signed by the President on October 15th, 1966, that would be Lyndon Johnson, declares that the historical and cultural foundations of the nation be preserved as a living part of the community life and development. In order to give a sense of orientation to the American people, historic preservation is an effective tool for revitalizing neighborhoods, fostering local pride, and maintaining community character while enhancing livability. It's important to celebrate the role of Glendale's history in our lives and the contribution made by dedicated individuals in helping to preserve the tangible aspects of the heritage that have shaped us as a people. Defeating Glendale's Jewel City nickname, Discover America's Hidden Gems is the theme of National Preservation Month 2012, and it's co-sponsored by our Historic Preservation Commission, the Glendale Historical Society, the Historical Society of the Chrysena Valley, and the National Trust for Historic Preservation.
I know that you all work very hard to maintain the historic character of Glendale, so I want to thank you for that, and congratulations. Ms. Hedor.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman, members of the council and staff. On behalf of the Historic Preservation Commission, the Glendale Historical Society, and the Historical Society of the Chrysena Valley, all of whom are represented here, I want to thank the City Council for recognizing the role historic preservation plays in our community as we work to protect important parts of the past while Glendale continues to change and grow. We want to let you know about a couple of ways we're celebrating Preservation Month this year. First, we have a photo display up at the Central Library featuring pictures of all 93 properties on the Glendale Register, along with information about our historic districts and a few shots of Glendale in its early years. In addition, HPC is co-sponsoring a workshop with the Glendale Historical Society titled Landmark This Glendale, to help property owners learn about the history of their buildings and ultimately write a nomination to the Glendale Register of Historic Resources. This event will be held on Wednesday, May 16th, at 7:00 P.M. in the offices of Neighborhood Legal Services located in the beautiful Art Deco Adams Square Building at 1104 East Chevy Chase Drive in Adams Street. So thank you very much for this recognition, we really appreciate it.
Anyone else want to make a few comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next proclamation is for Bike Month in Glendale. Proclamation reads as follows. Whereas the month of May is National Bike Month, and cities across the nation will be hosting events and promoting Bike to Work Day. The Glendale Employee Ride Sharing Program has been promoting the bicycle as an alternative transportation mode for almost a quarter century to reduce the number of single occupancy vehicles, improve the air quality, and promote good health. The City of Glendale has made an admirable commitment to enhancing the bicycle through our ride-sharing program, offering free bike rides on our Glendale Beeline, updating the bicycle transportation plan, and installation of bicycle lockers and racks throughout the city. We are engaged with partners from other local agencies and advocacy groups to list a city as a pit stop location for the Los Angeles County Bike to Work Day and provide information and support to bicyclists who visit the pit stop. Therefore, I, Frank Quintero, Mayor of the City of Glendale, proclaim the month of May as Bike Month in Glendale, and encourage all citizens to ride their bicycles and promote cycling as good for our health and our environment. A noted bicyclist and healthy council member, Rafi Manukian, will present it.
And while he's coming up, let me just say that I did bike to work today. My bicycle's out in my parking space.
Well, congratulations, and I will be volunteering for the City of Glendale's Bike Patrol, just so everyone knows. And I'm looking for a bike, hopefully, one of you guys will kind of help me pick one out. So congratulations, I think biking is a great alternative to driving to work or to school. So congratulations and hope that we can get more people to get out and bike so that there's less traffic. So thank you very much. Congratulations. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, my name is Myrna Martinez, and I'm from the Public Works Traffic and Transportation Department. May 12th is being celebrated across the nation as National Bike Month. City, states, and transportation industries is encouraging people to travel by bicycle for the transportation needs. This applies to everyday rider as well as the novice rider who just needs a little support to get started. Residents, visitors, and business communities are encouraged to ride their bike to school, work, shopping, or other business destinations, and just for fun and good health. The City of Glendale is continuing the momentum for past years in promoting bicycling, bicycle safety, and health benefits to our employees through our ride-sharing program. We are also sponsoring a Bike to Work Day pit stop at City Hall on Broadway, and we are co-sponsoring a pit stop at Flower and Sonora with Walk by Glendale. Our Glendale Beeline is offering free rides to bicyclists on Bike to Work Day. The City of Glendale website has been updated with links to Metro, LACBC, and Walk by Glendale, so you can visit our website at bikeglendale.com for more information on what is happening. And if you would like to allow me the opportunity to introduce some of our staff members here, and also some of our bicyclists. I would like to start with Rebecca Granite-Johnson, who is our executive analyst and also my supervisor, with Anush McGlarion, who is our administrative assistant, but she's also the employee transportation coordinator, Fred Soravin, who is our senior transportation planner, and Adam Porte, who is one of our advocates on our bicycle, employee bicycle commuter program, Jarrel Ginto, who's our PC specialist, he's also a bicyclist, Dan Askinizer, who's our senior program from GWP, and Colin Bogart from LACBC, and Eric Yesaien from Walk by Glendale. If you would also, Mayor, allow me to, we strongly support bicycling as an alternative to commuting by single-occupant vehicle because it helps reduce traffic congestion, like Mr. Manukian said, and it's environmentally friendly. We invite you to support us on our Bike to Work Day, and we will be handing out these special goodie bags. If I may, please allow the staff to hand one out to all the council members and the mayor.
Is there a bicycle in there?
There's a bicycle, Stressy. If I may, I would like to give, I would like to thank you for your ongoing support. I know Madam Mayor was there last year supporting our Bike to Work Day, so we hope to see you again on May 17th, and we will be in front of City Hall at 6:00 A.M., from 6:00 A.M. to 9:00 A.M. Thank you so much.
I also want to recognize Ry Berg, who's in the back there, who's generally active in active transportation issues. He's always at SCAG, he's here at the City of Glendale, along with Colin, they do a tremendous job of supporting this initiative.
Frank, you should mention.
Oh, yeah, and we do have Mayor's Bike Ride coming up. Hopefully, we'll get plenty of attention for that.
You're going to be riding?
We will be working on that.
An exceptional shape.
I'm already riding my stationary bike. And so, I'm sure you'll have some good participation from us.
Mr. Manukian, I'm very impressed. You know, that's up in the hills, the patrol.
Yes, I know.
Wow. Kudos to you. I couldn't do it.
I will try to qualify.
Thank you very much, all of you. Okay, and now we're going to have a really active presentation, I can tell. A proclamation to the Father's Follies.
Can GTV6 put the camera on the podium, please?
The proclamation, there you go. The proclamation reads as follows. The Verdugo Woodlands' Father's Follies is celebrating its 65th anniversary, and upon this occasion, it's deserving of special public commendation. The Father's Follies, the longest continuing elementary school PTA fundraiser in the nation, has been annually produced by the PTA and because Verdugo Woodlands' parents, just for the kids. Eighty-four years ago, Father's Night, consisting of a short skit and music, was developed to address the importance of fathers taking an interest in the school life of their children. In 1948, the show became the annual event known as Father's Follies, which now involves more than 200 parents, teachers, and Verdugo Woodlands' community members. Each year, the original Father's Follies production is composed of volunteers who are writers, producers, directors, designers, builders, painters, actors, singers, dancers, musicians, all of which are Verdugo Woodlands' dad, parents, and also ancient lovelies who remain in the show even after their children complete their elementary school. Two months of preparation and rehearsals are dedicated to each show at the Dance Club, which supports and operates the youth house in the Verdugo Woodlands' neighborhoods and also contains a historical collection of Follies show posters that are permanently framed for public display. So, I, Frank Montero, Mayor of the City of Glendale, urge all citizens to attend the Father's Follies as a vital and unique Glendale tradition that supports education, strengthens the bond with our children, and promotes community in a spirit of laughter and fun. And Mr. Najarian, who enjoys dressing up himself, will be presenting the proclamation.
Thank you very much. There you go. Thank you so much.
Well, as chairman of Father's Follies and producer of Father's Follies, I'd like to thank you for this most amazing proclamation. This is my, my name is Stephen O'Brien. This is my third year producing Father's Follies, my seventh year on the show. Father's Follies is a very special part of our community. It brings neighbors together. It brings fathers together, and we teach our kids that we can dress up and be silly and that we can accomplish anything that we wish. And we bring our kids, and over and over again, what we say is that we do this for the kids. Now, we have a very special treat for you. As far as I know, we are the only elementary school that has a alumni song. And my super amazing sextet would like to perform the Father's Follies alumni song for Verdugo Woodlands Elementary School.
Oh, what happy days! Our Verdugo Woodlands will always sing your praise! All those precious moments that we shall never forget! We'll stand for what is right, for truth will always fight. The tests that are at hand will do with all our might. So hail Verdugo Woodlands! We're proud to be a part of you! We're proud to be a part of you!
I will be in big trouble if I don't say that the show is May 11th and 12th at Glendale High School, Friday night at 7:30 and Saturday night at 5:00. And we have tickets for all of you at woke hall. This is a huge community event and would really enjoy if you could all come out.
Very good. May 11th and 12th.
Microphone.
I've also been in the show three years. First year was dancing to the...
I missed that one.
Yeah. Who Let the Dog Out, Logs Out, had to dance up the ah with an invisible dog. And I was the mayor of Tortuga.
Yes.
In the one, and then the other one, one of the guys in robes standing at the back.
Yes.
I was with you.
You were with me, eh?
Yes, I was on stage with you also.
I was told I was in this one, but the lady with the purple hair hasn't cornered me yet, so.
Well, that's the other thing.
I see you back there.
I should mention that once you've been in the show and you've moved on, your children have graduated, that then we refer to you as an ancient lovelie. And Councilman...
That's right, it was ancient lovelie.
Weaver, you are an ancient lovelie and would like to invite you to be in the show this year.
Yeah, I need rehearsals, though.
Oh, no, that's...
I just showed up there.
Rehearsals completely overrated.
It's more fun without them.
But we'll be rehearsing all next week at Glendale High School from 7:00 on.
Every night?
Every night, Monday through Thursday, and then Friday night is the show.
What time?
7:00 each night until...
You don't need rehearsal, Mr....
I know, but I like to go to one.
So, just come on down or call the school and they'll get you in contact with me.
Okay. Thank you so much.
There you go, I was wrong. I thought it was Mr. Najarian that liked to dress up. It turned out to be Mr. Weaver.
That, that, that pack is wrong. You should say council members, too.
Mr. Weaver, can we all refer to you as an ancient lovelie?
I'm almost 73, so I guess I can.
Very nice.
Well, thank you.
See you guys down there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's hilarious when they get in the women's clothes. City employees have done that, too. Their love, my ice cake.
Mr. Clerk, what's next?
Next on the agenda is at 3F, the nomination assignment for Civil Service Commission for expiring Commissioner John M. Gantis. This would be Councilmember Najarian's nomination.
I'll think about it. I don't have anyone to nominate yet, but they're just assigned.
Okay, great. Next, please.
Next on the agenda is city council and staff comments.
Mayor, I moved the consent calendar, but I'd like to fill 5F.
Oh, it's comments.
Yes, I would like to comment regarding last week's Week of Remembrance events. The April 24th event was certainly a tremendous educational and emotional program. I would like to thank the committee, my co-chair, Mr. Arun Najarian, council member. I would like to thank the committee members who worked very hard to put the program together. I would like to thank city staff, who also worked very hard. I would also like to thank the Alex staff, who also worked very hard, and they, all these staff members and committee members are longstanding members of these committees and the staff that has worked diligently year after year to make this event, these events of last week, a success, which is an important event in the community. We received, we as the city, received numerous accolades from community members who were present at the Alex that day, and I continue to get comments from community members as I, as I go out in the community regarding, regarding the events. Everyone was very enthusiastic about the event and how it was presented. Last Sunday, there was the Men's Inhumanity to Men event program as well, which was fairly well-attended. I would have liked to seen it better attended because it's just as important. And its task, it took a different tact as it relates to inhumanity perpetrated by people. And the tact was, it was a short film that won, that won the competition of, it was, the whole purpose was, the whole program was individuals who had prepared short films of about 15 minutes about men's inhumanity to men, and it was not just about genocides, it was about human trafficking, about abuse and all of that. And the thing that stood out in my mind was the short film regarding human trafficking. It was, it was bold, it was eye-opening, and it certainly affected me deeply, and it increased my awareness about, about the issues of inhumanity that is in our communities and it is worldwide. So, I was very much affected by it, and I want to thank everyone that worked very hard and, and the individuals who, the top three individuals who prepared the films and, and won scholarship as well. I would also like to thank the International Academy of Film and Television for providing one scholarship for a whole year's tuition for attending their academy, as well as 15 summer scholarships for attending their academy, and I want to thank them for their, for their generous donations. The comment that, over the past week, and I get this comment all the time in, in the community, is what happened to the memorial that was to be erected at the Civic Auditorium parking lot, the location that was allocated by the City of Council a number of years ago? And it's been approximately six years. I was, I was on council back then when we voted for it, and the comment is nothing, nothing is done and nothing has happened. There's a small piece of plaque over there that actually states that this is the location, but nothing, nothing has been done in terms of work to make it a reality. And the intent was, at that time when we voted for it, was for the community to raise the funds for the memorial, and to date, there are no funds that have been raised, and there's no organization. And the community is, at this point, from what I understand, is asking, the Armenian American community in Glendale is asking, what has happened to this project? I think that it is time that our community comes together and works towards that goal. And I would like to call upon our community to those who are interested, those who are conscious about the issue and the memorial itself, to come forward and to contact me, and I would like Councilman Najarian, with whom I have discussed this issue at length, not just now, but over the years, to join me in, in making this a reality. I think it's an important issue for the Armenian-American community. I think it's an important issue for me, and I would hope that the community comes forward. I know that the Unified Young Armenians, whose event we attended last week, last Monday, they were very more than ready to, to step out and work with us to make this a reality. So, this is a call to action to the community. This is a call to action, instead of asking questions of us, what has happened to the memorial, it's a call to ask, it's a call to action for the community to stand together and to make this a reality.
And let me just echo those remarks. It's our hope that the community can come together and create the proper funding and fill the budget. We have talked about a very dramatic and very quick timeline. We're talking about hopefully celebrating April 24th next year at the monument. That may be quick, but let's set that as our goal to try and do that. The committee worked very well on the genocide event, and together, I think, the same members and same groups of the community can come together and create the funding that will make this monument something that we can all be proud of on the land that has already been set aside eight years ago, I think, maybe even longer, by, by the city council. Though that is... That's good. I have a few other, were you finished with your...
Yeah, that's it.
Let me just sort of jump around a little bit. This week was a great week for transportation in, in Los Angeles County. We saw the opening of the Expo Line, which is a nine-mile rail line downtown Los Angeles. It goes south, hits that fine university at Exposition Park, ergo the name, the Expo Line, and heads west towards Culver City. That's Phase One of the Expo Line, and in a few short years, that line will eventually make it all the way to Santa Monica. So, it's a very great addition to the transportation system in Southern California. The Metro Board also certified the EIR for the West Side Subway Extension, which will essentially go from downtown Los Angeles westbound on Wilshire Boulevard, making stops along the way, most likely a stop in Century City, terminating in Westwood for Phase One. Phase Two will again take it all the way to the sea. So, that will also be a, that will be the subway to the sea. It commits about $8 billion of transportation funding. It's a serious commitment by the residents of LA County who voted for Measure R three years ago. This is where your money is going. So, that's a very great, a very great day. And then again, just back to the, the genocide event, it was a very great event. We had many dignitaries come to speak, and we heard from our state representatives, from Congressman Adam Schiff, attended by all the colleagues, all my colleagues on the dais. It was great work by the committee. We did extend an invitation to a special guest to attend, but she was not able to make it on that day. She extended her apologies and her regards to all the residents of Glendale, and in lieu of appearing personally, she delivered to me and to us in the City of Glendale, a video, commentary, and discussion about the Armenian genocide. And Sabrina, I think you have a tape.
Beginning in 1915, more than 1.5 million men, women, and children were massacred by the hands of the Ottoman Turks. It was carried out through large-scale massacres and death marches. This was considered to be the modern genocide. This tragedy is known as the Armenian Genocide, which is commemorated worldwide on April 24th. Please join us in commemorating the loss of those innocent lives of millions of people worldwide. Through efforts such as the genocide can be prevented. According to George Santayana, those who cannot remember past are condemned to repeat.
Anyone hasn't been around the United States or landed on the planet is the one and only Kim Kardashian. She brings a lot of celebrity and publicity, but I don't think anyone can bring too much attention to the Armenian genocide, especially in the month of April. So, I'm sorry she couldn't be there at the event. It would have been a little more exciting and had a little more attention drawn to it, but I do applaud her efforts at sending us the video. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I just wanted to briefly echo my colleagues thanking all of the people who are responsible for all of the genocide and Men's Inhumanity for Man events, and to especially thank council members Manukian, Manukian and Najarian for all of their work. It was a really moving... It was a really moving event, and they just did an amazing job, really went above and beyond. And I also wanted to commend the United Young Armenians for their event. It's really wonderful to see a group of young people being so interested in commemorating the genocide and keeping that memory alive and pushing for recognition of the genocide of the United States. So congratulations to all of them for running another wonderful event. Thank you.
Yeah, I agree, starting with the United Young Armenians event, the event at the Alex Central Library, they were all excellent. And, you know, we've been doing this every year for a long time, yet eleven years to be precise, but yet every year there's a new twist, there's something different, there's something that you can learn from, and something new to understand. In terms of the monument, I feel the same way. I mean, the site was chosen there by, in front of the college, next to the Civic Auditorium. Actually, a monument was decided on, a series of water, and it just kind of lost energy. So I think it's time to revive it, to do the fundraising necessary and to get it built. So hopefully, we can put that back at the top of the priority and get it built as soon as we possibly can. Any other, any staff comments? Mr. Mayor?
I also want to thank the committee who organized the commemorative events for the 97th anniversary of the Armenian genocide. Unfortunately, I could not be here. I was in Washington DC to attend the Capitol Hill Observance, which was also well-attended. And I hope that there are some efforts made to see the realization of what the committee, of which I was a part as an appointee of Councilmember Manukian at the time, come to a reality eventually. But in addition to that, there's an event that I was asked to announce. Prior to that, this coming weekend, there are a couple of important city events, not this one just yet, but the Verdugo Mountain Run, the Trail Run, that's the second year that will be taking place at Brand Park, very well-attended. Encourage everyone to come out, attend, and run. And also, everyone, all of our Latino brothers and sisters who will be celebrating Cinco de Mayo and that important victory over the French forces so many years ago. The other event, though, in the spirit of commemoration and remembering what happened during the Armenian genocide, Abreu Bookstore, as well as the Alumni and Friends of the Armenian Studies Program at Cal State University Northridge, and the Musa Lera Association of California are presenting a republishing of a very important book by Franz Wurfel, The Forty Days of Musadag, which includes 25% more text previously excised from the original translation. This is a very voluminous novel, so if you've read it, you know that 25% is quite a bit more. But it chronicles the stand that a number of Armenians made in the last days of the genocide, withstanding or resisting annihilation by the Ottoman Army. On a place called Musadag, Dr. Vehram Shamasyan will be speaking, as well as Dr. Rubina Perumyan. And just by way of history, this book was one of the first books that Hitler banned during Third Reich because of the topic that it covered of resistance against annihilation. Franz Wurfel was one of the banned authors by the Nazis in Germany. So this event will take place Friday, May 4th, 2012, at the Glendale Central Library Auditorium. I know that these types of announcements are Leon's territory, but I was asked by Abreu Bookstore to make it. Thank you.
Okay, and I do want to adjourn the City Council meeting. I have a request from GWP. I would like to adjourn the City Council meeting in remembrance of William David Hobbs, GWP employee, was born in 1958 in Tokyo, Japan, and later joined the Marine Corps and served for 11 years, and he's married, wife Christine, he has a daughter Winnie and a son Joseph. He passed as State of California Professional Land Surveyor, PLS, and he became a licensed surveyor. He was active in many professional engineering and mapping societies, and was a member of the California Society for Land Surveyors. He joined the City of Glendale in September 09 as a resources specialist. And Dave made major contributions to advance the use of GIS technology in the City of Glendale. Worked on several projects such as the City Services Interface, or CSI. The City Works Asset Managers, GWTP, mapping of electric and water easements. He was a PLS professional who had years of knowledge and survey experience. He did a lot to improve the accuracy of mapping in Glendale. And his dedication to the advancement of geographic information system technology in the City of Glendale has made a very significant contribution to the city. The staff report, Dave was a delight to work with, always optimistic, bright and energetic, and unfortunately died of a sudden heart attack. We'll adjourn the meeting in his... Okay, next?
Next, on the regular agenda's consent items, including minutes of following a routine that may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before a motion is proposed.
I do have a request to pull 5B from the consent calendar.
I'd like to pull 5F.
A.
I need to abstain on 5A since I was not present at the meeting.
Right, so we'll pull those two lines.
The remainder of the consent calendar.
Full call.
That is, with the exception of 5B as in Boyan, and 5F. Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Manukian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes.
5B is Chief of Police regarding United States Department of Justice, Office of Justice Programs, Bureau of Justice Assistance, 2012 Justice Assistance Grant, JAG. B1 is Resolution Authorizing Participation, 2012 Justice Assistant Grant. And B2 is a Resolution Appropriating $23,778 to provide grant funds for participation in 2012 Justice Assistance Grant.
I have one card, Mike Mohill.
Evening, Mayor Quintero, council members in the viewing audience. My name is Mike Mohill. Tonight, the city is going to approve the resurfacing of East Glen Oaks Boulevard where I live. Isn't that on that?
Now, this is for the police.
I'm sorry, I thought I got, I thought I had F, did I?
You pulled already.
Oh, I'm sorry. All right, we'll move 5B.
Second on B.
Full call.
Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Manukian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes.
5F is Director of Public Works regarding East Glen Oaks Boulevard and adjacent street rehabilitation project. And F1 is motion awarding a construction contract to Hardy and Harper, Inc., in the amount of $1,545,000, approving $155,000 reserved for contingencies and rejecting all other bids. F2 is a motion authorizing an increase to the West Coast Arborist contract in the amount of $32,365 for tree removal work and new tree plantings on Glen Oaks Boulevard and on Bruce Avenue.
Mike Mohill.
Wait, I'd like to speak first. I pulled it. I told staff, after I reviewed the plans two or three times, I absolutely would vote against this. I cannot do that. It's too important to the canyon. I don't like the white lines that they're going to put in, that supposedly narrow Glen Oaks. I've lived in the canyon almost 73 years, and the thing that stops them is the cars that are parked on the side, not the white line. I've seen speeders going 60, 70 miles an hour on that road. And I don't like charros. You don't need to encourage bicyclists on there. I rode a bicycle back in the 1940s on the street. Anybody can ride the streets, they don't need a charro to tell them that they can go partway with it. So I was going to vote against it for those reasons, but no, it's too important. I just, I'm happy to see that the low bid came in 20,000 below the government, city estimate, which is quite good, 2% deviation. We'll be planting 43 new trees in Glen Oaks Canyon. There've been areas where I wish we'd had trees in, and we'll get them in the future, we'll have a nice canopy. And all the neighbors that will see, I think we're taking out three trees. If one of those trees is in front of your house, you will be clearly notified ahead of time. We learned our lessons from Bruce Avenue, and we'll be out there to tell them what's happening. Supposed to tell the people that are going to get trees that they're coming in. The other thing, since every street in Glen Oaks Canyon is being slurry sealed, except Glen Oaks itself, the, every neighborhood that has a cul-de-sac, they're going to have to empty their cars out of the cul-de-sac area for a minimum from nine to five, so the slurry can dry. So there will be contact with every single house in every cul-de-sac, alerting them a day ahead. Tomorrow, you get your family and you, and you all get out before nine o'clock in the morning, and you don't come back in until after five o'clock. There's only 750 homes they have to contact, and I'm sure that if we miss anybody, the calls will arrive here at City Hall. But no, it was its time. I think the last time it was tore up, it used to be all concrete, tore it up to put a storm drain in there. It's back in the 40s and 50s, no storm drains. My father would park his car at Verdugo and Chevy Chase, roll up his pad legs, and have to walk the whole way home into the canyon. So times have changed, and finally, we're going to get a resurfacing. I thank you, staff, for, I had nothing to do with it. It was the pavement index that indicated it was the time. I know you have a speaker in the middle, glad to make the motion.
Well, you raise a good point, Mr. Weaver, and the staff report isn't clear. Are we putting in a road diet, bike lanes, charros? Which? Because it's not...
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Najarian, this, this stretch of Glen Oaks is included in the bicycle transportation plan, which you've gotten a preview of, and you'll get the formal approval or formal presentation of that on the 15th. It includes bike lanes from the two freeway up into the back of the canyon. However, in my conversations with the Homeowners Association, they've indicated they would like to be able to keep the two-way left turn area from Mount Carmel past Glen Oaks Elementary School, which makes very good sense to me. If any of you have been in that canyon, when school is drop-off and pickup time, it's pretty busy. So we'll likely just use charros in that area and maintain the two-way left turn lane. Now, of course, that's contingent upon your approval of the plan. If that doesn't occur, then we'll go back with a regular striping plan.
So is Mr. Weaver referring to traffic calming device where the white lines are placed, like Chevy Chase Canyon has?
Yes. Mr. Najarian, this will actually be, that's what's there now. That's what we have there now. We have edge lines there now.
It's a waste.
So what is included in the bicycle transportation plan is actual bike lanes on each side of the street.
Wait, not the whole way up, just over there again. It's too narrow at the above-shore drive. You have a bicyclist, the cars behind are going to have to follow the bicycle the entire way up the canyon because you have a double line in the middle, and you cannot pass.
What we're going to do is re-stripe the street to keep the bike lane as far up, leave it, it's almost the entire way, and then we'll use charros the rest of the way.
You can't.
So where it narrows, you're absolutely right, where it narrows and it isn't, isn't safe, we'll go with the charros where we have the shared lane.
I cross a double yellow line all the time, so I don't know, it's okay.
I checked with Transportation, you can make a turn on a double, but you cannot pass.
Would you like to bring this back on the striping issue, Mr. Weaver? Because I'm...
Well, Mr. Najarian, we'll have the bicycle transportation plan for you, so we'll lay it out, and I'll make sure to show that exactly.
If there's a bicycle going up there, and you're caught behind, you're going to have to follow the bike the whole way up into the canyon.
Otherwise, the fallback position is a single double yellow line down the middle of the street, standard procedure, but it'll depend on your approval or comments on the bicycle transportation plan.
At a later date?
Yeah, the striping takes place at the very end of the project.
Yeah.
What we're trying to do is get this done while school's out, at least in front of Glen Oaks. So the striping, we have two options in this bid. So we can either do the bicycle, the bicycle lanes and charros, or we can go back to the standard striping configuration. But I will make sure that when we bring this to you on the 15th, that we point that out for your consideration.
And also, the school, Glen Oaks Elementary, has been notified.
Correct. And we've had a community meeting in this canyon already.
A community meeting, too. Thank all the mistakes we've had in the past have been caught.
One card, Mike Mohill.
Mr. Mohill, the mayor has indicated one minute for this portion of commentary, just so you're aware.
Right. Mayor Quintero, council members, viewing audience, my name is Mike Mohill, resident of Glen Oaks Canyon. I'd like to thank Mr. Weaver for his support on this idea of the resurfacing. Whatever he's done, I appreciate. I remember coming for this council about five years ago, talking about the potholes on Glen Oaks, East Glen Oaks Boulevard. It was very dangerous at that time. And about a month or so later, Steve Zern from the Public Works Department had his crew out there and started working on those potholes. And since then, we've had some other activity from the homeowners group in Glen Oaks Canyon. And I'm very happy that we've come this far today. When a group of people organize and get together, nothing can say that things can happen. And I'm very happy that we're getting this resurfacing. I know there are other parts in the city that are just as need, as needed as people here in Glen Oaks Canyon, and I feel very... We've got three seconds. Happy, thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move 5F, one and two.
Second. Full call.
Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Manukian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes.
And when does this start? June?
June is the estimated start date. As soon as school gets out, we'll go to work right in front of Glen Oaks Elementary.
Should be done by September.
September, end of September, yes.
Just want the public to hear.
Right, next, please.
Next is the Oral Communications, three-minute event announcement portion.
Right, we'll start with Ryberg, followed by Salma Basrani.
May I begin?
Good evening, Mayor Quintero and council members. We are very...
Your name for the right side, please.
I'm Ryberg, and I live in Montrose, sorry. And I'm a member of Walk Bike Glendale, and we are very excited about May being Bike Month. And I'm here tonight to present a couple of events that we are working on this month. The first is two bicycle skills safety rodeos. The first will be on May 5th at Fremont Elementary up in Spar Heights, and the second will be on May 19th at Richard D. White Elementary. These are going to be events to teach children how to safely ride their bicycles, how to use their hand signals, we'll teach them how to safely wear their helmets, and to avoid road hazards. And these are free to the public, and they are available for all grades K through six. So we hope that the public will come out, and we hope to see some of you there as well. The second event, which is very fitting because this is also, May has been designated the Glendale Historic Month, too, is a historical bike ride in Montrose. This will start at the Montrose Bike Shop, and we will be touring around the neighborhood and stopping at some historic sites. This will be on May 12th, and it will start at 10:00 AM. And this is sponsored by the Historical Society, Walk Bike Glendale, the Montrose Patch, and the Public Works Department. So if any of you can make it out, we'd love to see you there as well. We also would like to thank you for all your work on the bicycle transportation plan, and thank you very much.
Mr. Berg, I have a question.
Yes.
For the history bike ride, what level of cyclist are you recommending?
It's an excellent question. We are, this is a family ride. It is a little bit hilly up there, so we may have to hop off our bikes and walk a block or so, but we're trying to, we've got the route planned out, so it'll be pretty flat most of the way.
Okay, well, I will be joining you for the bike ride, and I'm also going to come by the May 19th Bicycle Skills Safety Rodeo to check it out and maybe make sure my helmet fits properly.
All right, that'd be great, we'd love to see you.
Thanks for having these events.
Right.
Salma Basrani, followed by Leon Mayer.
Good evening, Mayor Quintero, council members and staff. I'm here, I'm Salma Basravi with Keller Williams Realty, and basically, I'm the chairperson for fundraising and charities in the community on behalf of Keller Williams Realty. Last... Last year, we had supported the shelter for battered women and children at YWCA and we kind of kept it at a very local level. And we had such a phenomenal outcome that this year we feel it's not fair to just keep it a secret anymore. We're inviting the community and we invite each one of you. What we're doing is we are collecting donations. Our agents knocked over 2,000 doors, almost 3,000 doors last year, and we collected over three, 6,000 bags of goods, including furniture on the side and TVs, et cetera, for those women and children. This year, we are stepping it up. The agents are knocking on doors, they've already started their work, starting today, May 1st. They'll stop on May 9th. May 10th, we are taking our trucks to collect those stuff. And so we are here to spread the word. We are collecting, I have a flyer, didn't realize I needed to give it in earlier, but we would like to invite the community to please support this huge, huge cause. And I'll let Annette give you the statistics as to how phenomenal last year's event was.
Good evening, Salma. Good evening, Mayor, council members and staff. My name is Annette Kosker, I represent the YWCA of Glendale. And last year, this young lady was very gracious and her efforts helped raise, she had a canned food drive, she did a clothing drive for the women and children in our service area, which helped support our women and children for almost a year. So we didn't have to do any extra additional things for the women, especially who are in transitional housing. So with her help, we were able to have linens and towels and diapers for the children, food, and all sorts of good items. So anything that's gently used, we always accept from the community. So this year, it's the second annual that she's presenting here today and thank you for giving us this opportunity to be here and-
And could you tell us again how the public would go about contacting you, what number or?
Absolutely. Our main number is 818-432-3200. And the person in charge of this who's receiving calls and giving directions is Patricia Sarkisian.
So the public that wants to donate?
Yes, and this event will happen on May 10th. And the trucks go out at 8:00 a.m. for the residents who would not like to drop things off, would rather have things picked up. But we are also opening it up to residents and people in the community. We had, I mean, lines and lines of cars dropped by our office and we had staff ready to go unload their car and load the stuff. And then this wonderful lady, Annette, came there with the truck to pick up the donation. So thank you for the opportunity.
What's the name of the company again?
Keller Williams Realty.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You need the address?
Yeah, why not throw it in?
411 North Central Avenue, Glendale. And again, this is not a one-man show. We have so many people leading with heart, all our agents knocking on doors. Thank you.
We have two hard-charging agents there in the audience that I know that can persuade people to do anything. Leon Mayer, followed by Christine Baboumian.
Good evening, Mayor Quintero, members of the council and staff. My name is Leon Mayer. I'm here in behalf of the friends at the library and for this particular event, the Glendale Healthy Kids. Now, we've been sitting here all night, ready to talk about Lawrence Stor, orthopedic surgeon, world-renowned orthopedic surgeon, who resides with his wife in La Cañada, he's lived there for 20 years. And it's a privilege to have someone of his status coming to Glendale and taking his time out to talk about his book. Now, his book, Die Once, Live Twice, is an unforgettable historical novel that goes back to pre-Civil War times, takes us through all the way to Guadalcanal. And it weaves a fine story about a Philadelphia family who's contributed unbelievable things to our country and how the miracles of modern medicine have occurred and benefited society and the people who are involved in bringing about these miracles. And it's just a terrific book and it's a terrific novel. And I say world-renowned orthopedic surgeon. He has written 300 books about medicine, orthopedic surgeon, hip surgery. He has, in 2005, he was honored by the American Academy of Orthopedic Surgeons for his work in going to other parts of the world, and I mean all over the world, with groups of orthopedic surgeons to perform important surgeries on people in need all over the world. He's also in demand throughout the United States. He's been head of the three orthopedic institutions, nationwide institutions. And I can't say too much about him and I can't say too much about the historical novel. I've read it, I picked it up and I read it over a weekend, I couldn't put it down. It's just a great book that weaves the story of a family and their descendants through the modern miracles of medicine. And I just urge everybody to consider trying to make that date with the Glendale Healthy Kids who've also, we brought them in not by coincidence. Glendale Healthy Kids also serves the children of Glendale. So we all ask everybody to consider on May 17th, 7:00, to come to the library, come early for our annual meeting. You might also consider joining the friends at that time. No charge for the event and parking is at the, validated at the Maryland Avenue structure. Thank you very much.
Goodness, Mayor.
If anybody wants any flyers as you leave, my wife is rear the room with flyers. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Christine Baboumian, followed by Arlene Vidor.
Good evening, Mayor Quintero, council member staff. My name is Christine Baboumian, staffer of the City of Glendale Commission on the Status of Women. I'm here to invite you and the rest of the community to the commission's eighth annual Jewels of Glendale Awards Luncheon. It'll take place Thursday, May 10th at Oakmont Country Club. At this luncheon, the commission honors women of courage. These are women who have overcome hardship in their lives and have used their experiences to give back to their own community. This year, the honorees are Lori Hartwell, Christine Hovnanian, sisters Betty Porto and Margarita Navarro, and Suzanne Slaughter. From this list of talented, driven women have emerged successful nonprofit organizations, thriving businesses, financial literacy assistance to the community, as well as help to domestic violence victims. Additionally, Eileen Givens, who's a former mayor of the City of Glendale, will be honored with a special chair's recognition for her continued service to this community. And additionally, the commission's Gem Student Scholarship will be awarded to Amy Yerian. She is a graduating high school senior from Chrysena Valley High School and she'll be honored for the work she's done for her peers in the community. We hope that everyone can come learn more about these exceptional women and help support the commission at this event. In addition to honoring these exceptional women, this event serves as a fundraiser for the commission so that it can go on to provide education and literacy to women and girls in this community. Tickets are available still. Anyone interested should purchase them in advance by calling 818-548-4844. Thank you very much for your time. Good night.
To Arlene Vidor.
Thank you very much. My name is Arlene Vidor, I'm with the Brand Associates and this announcement is to let the public know that on Thursday, May 10th at 7:00 p.m. at the Central Library, we're going to screen a documentary with a very alluring title, The Desert of Forbidden Art. It's free and open to the public. And the film sheds light on the question, how does artistic freedom survive in a time of oppression? Usually it doesn't. And during the Soviet era, pursuing your creative vision could get you committed to a mental hospital, sent to the Gulag for life, or even executed. The film we're going to screen is about a young, starving Soviet artist, Igor Savitsky, who pretended to buy state-approved art, but actually was rescuing 40,000 forbidden and condemned works of art made by his fellow Soviet artists. And then he managed to squirrel them away in a museum, which is now worth millions of dollars, in a remote desert in Uzbekistan. He also very cleverly extracted cash from the Soviet authorities to buy these works without them even realizing what it was they were buying. The LA Times said this film is stranger than fiction several times over. The New York Times called it a gorgeous documentary and actors Ed Asner, Sally Field, and Ben Kingsley narrate the film. It won Best Documentary at the Palm Beach Film Festival in 2010 and we're very fortunate and honored to have the filmmakers there with us to answer questions after the screening. So once again, the film is The Desert of Forbidden Art, Thursday, May 10th, 7:00, at the Glendale Public Library Auditorium at 222 East Harvard Street. And we have some flyers. We hope you can attend. Thank you.
Okay, that ends the first portion of oral communications. Next, please.
Next item on the agenda is adoption of ordinance, a 7A is an ordinance, meaning tile 2 until tile 8 of the Glendale Municipal Code 1995, retitling library department to the Library Arts and Culture Department, placing administrative responsibility of the Arts and Culture Commission with the Library Arts and Culture Department, and revising the powers and duties of the Arts and Culture Commission. This was offered on April 17th by Councilmember Weaver.
Mr. Ochoa.
Yes, sir. This is just the follow-up for the discussion that was had by council. As you recall, the idea is to move the Arts and Culture Commission from Parks and Community Services, or Community Services and Parks, to the library as a reflection of the growing effort and movement within libraries in this country to really become cultural hubs for their communities. At the same time, and in further reflection of this evolution, we are recommending that you trans, to change the name of the library to Library Arts and Culture. And if you have any specific questions, I'm sure either Cindy Cleary or Jess Duran can answer this for you.
Mayor, you want to motion? Move 7A.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman-
Yes.
Menuchyan-
Yes.
Najarian-
Yes.
Weaver-
Aye.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes. Next.
Now return to the full five-minute portion of oral communication. This is the part where discussion is limited and is not part of this agenda. Speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to speaker, but there'll be no debate or decision. And the city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report.
Anaheh Panijian, followed by Harry Zavos.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Frank Quintero, the members of the city council, the staff and the audience. My name is Anaheh Panijian. I would like to thank the City of Glendale's annual commemorative event committee and all of those who worked so hard to make it possible by three events. Civic, one, it was Unified Young Armenian Candlelight Vigil at Glendale Civic Auditorium parking lot, and second event at Alex Theater on April 24th. The third event, Mains in Humanity to Men, which was held on April 26th, with a screening of short films. All these events provide moral interpretive account and will assist our educational program and will help the student in the school to learn, to learn the importance of tolerance, upholding human rights, sorry, and increase awareness that all the facts goes on. Our concern is to remind the world of the moral need to speak out against injustice and humanity. I would like also to remind something about another event, which was held at Glendale Central Library on April 29th, afternoon event, which was held by, sorry, by author Bart Edelman, which is currently professor of English Language at Glendale Community College. And beginning of the event, was presented to him a certificate of recognition as a famous poetry collection by Mark Frank Quintero. This, like professor, teach poetry workshop across the United States and as was poet in residency at Monrovia College of the State University at New York. In his poet, poetry collection, the book titles, The Geographer's Wife, explores how our sense of environment creates and frames the world we choose to inhabit. The speakers in Edelman's poem perpetually find themselves in conflict with world around them. The choices they make sometimes free them to discover a life full of promises, sometimes cast them into uncertainty, and sometimes condemn them to recreation. Again and again, the landscape they visit serve as both boundary and horizon. This sense of place, east and west, north and south, directs the physical and spiritual movement we often take for granted as we pass through days and nights that direct us each one of in our journeys every day. Thank you very much. I would like to appreciate Councilmember Laura Friedman for her wonderful speech at April 23rd at Candlelight Vigil Evening. Thank you very much. It was great and impressive speech. Thank you again. Thank you all of you for giving time to come in this podium. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Harry Zavos, followed by Mike Mohill.
Council, my name is Harry Zavos. I'm a citizen of Glendale. Weeks ago, I illustrated why I don't trust the city's consultants, Wildom's use of numbers by looking at its model adopted by the city that changed the sharing of GWP expenses from 75% electric, 25% water, to 68% electric, 32% water. Because unlike water, electric does not govern by Proposition 218, the resulting $20 million savings accruing to electrical can be transferred to the general fund. To reach this result, Wildom's model changed the previous 75% electric, 25% water allocation across all expense categories to various other percentages. I showed that some customer account-driven categories like mail operations, oops, customer-driven categories like mail operations and customer accounting for GWP bills were allocated by Wildom 50/50 between electric and water. But Wildom's own data showed that GWP's total accounts are split 73% electric, 27% water. Thus, GWP must keep account for and mail 2.7 times more electrical bills than water. This facially contradicts Wildom's 50/50 split for these categories. The city, in writing, explained this facial contradiction by first conceding the allocations could have been based on the relative demand placed on these categories by electric and water, as reflected by the percentage of accounts. Then it stated, with such an allocation, adjustments would have to be made for factors such as new accounts. Finally, it concluded, as a result, such an allocation would be more problematic and less cost-effective as a matter of program administration than an allocation that divides the costs between GWP's to utilities, electric and water. I responded by pointing out that of the 17 customer account-driven categories of the Wildom model, 13, such as meter reading and credit and collections, used a 73%, 27% split to allocate expenses between electric and water. And then I raised the, why is not sauce for the goose, sauce for the gander question? I framed it in terms of mail operations, although I could have used any of the other 450/50- although I could have used any of the other four 50/50 categories, customer-account-driven categories. I asked, what is it about mail operations that makes it problematic to use a 73/27 split, the split dictated by the actual percentage of accounts, but doesn't also do the same for meter reading and credit and collections? Here's the answer I received. While other slivers, meaning categories, factor in specific customer-account-driven data, this one, meaning mail operations, does not. This sliver is split 50/50 because there are two sides of the house, water and electric. I find this a non-answer answer. It merely restates the problem, the inconsistency, without giving a solution. Others within the sound of my voice can decide for themselves whether the city's answers have reassured them that it and its consultants' use of numbers is rational, coherent, and consistent, is trustworthy. Whether or not there's any rationale for using the actual demand on these categories when it comes to meter reading, credit and collection, why it's not problematic, but it is with respect to the other two. And incidentally, the Wildom model itself, a memo setting it out, indicates because there is a need to reassess periodically that all these categories should be reassessed biannually.
Okay, next. Mohill. Mike Mohill, followed by Shanook Ramirez.
Good evening, Mr. Quintero, councilmembers in the viewing audience. My name is Mike Mohill. Ladies and gentlemen in the viewing audience, can you feel it? It's invisible. It doesn't hit you in the face. It will guarantee to empty out your wallets and your purses. Yes, thank you, councilmembers Friedman, Najarian, and Weaver, for voting to increase our water rates only 1% now and more after the April 2013 election. Then our water rates will go up another 11% over the next four years. Of course, that was on top of the 59% in water rate increases we have already endured over the past 10 years. The ratepayers of the GWP, Glendale Water and Power, will also see their fixed cost portion of their water bill increase about 30% over the next several years. What that means, if you go on vacation or do not use your water, the utility company will still charge you a monthly fixed rate. The GWP wants a guaranteed revenue stream. Our water rate increases are going up and away like a beautiful balloon, faster than you can say, I'm on Social Security, I'm on fixed income, I just lost my job, and they just reduced my working hours. My investment portfolio just took another dump, and the landlord just raised my rent. Mayor Frank Quintero, the ultimate politician that he is, voted against the water rate increases in order to look like a hero to the voting electric in next year's election. But remember, he always approved the transfer of millions of dollars from the GWP into the pockets of his union supporters. Wasn't that a bit sneaky, folks? As we struggle to make ends meet, councilmembers tell us the water utility needs the money to fix the water infrastructure. But we know from past experience the same water rate increases were transferred again instead to the city employees for their generous salaries and lifetime pensions. I have a question for councilmembers Friedman, Najarian, and Weaver. Some members of the public felt that your colleague, Frank Quintero, was going to vote against the water rate increases. So why did you allow yourselves to take the heat for voting for the increases? After all, like you, he also received Union PAC money when he ran for city council. As he plays the role of the honorable mayor for the next 12 months, let us see if he keeps his promise to the voters that he will not run for reelection in April 2013. In 2009, our mayor received $15,000, as did Councilman Aaron Najarian, from the city for unions, and they both voted union all the way. Again, like I mentioned two weeks ago, Mr. Quintero and Mr. Dave Weaver, both in 2001, voted to change the pension rules so that their friends in the police and fire department could retire at the ripe old age of 50 and receive 90% of their last year's salary as a pension for life. Non-public employees need to work to age 65 or longer and only receive a small Social Security check for their lifetime pension. I ask you, is that fair? In last year's council election, the Glendale Police Department Political Action Committee spent $11,000 for a campaign mailer for the reelection of Councilman Dave Weaver. In December 2010, The Los Angeles Times reported our new mayor in 2009 received about $23,500 from the subcontractors of ADI, Advanced Development and Investments, a public housing company who today continues under federal investigation. Mr. Quintero, like former mayor Laura Freeman, didn't you know the subcontractors of ADI and their families who gave you the money? Or did they give you and Mrs. Friedman the money because they liked the way you both parted your hair? And then you approved their million-dollar projects? As the working families continue to struggle, who speaks for the little people, Mayor Quintero? And here is the flyer that Mr. Weaver sent out by the Police Political Action Committee. On his behalf, they spent $11,000 to make sure that he got reelected. Thank you. My name is Mike Mohill.
Hey, I paid for that one myself. Don't confuse.
He's running for city council, Mr. Weaver.
I know he's running for city council, but I.
Shanook Ramirez.
Good evening. I would like to thank my beloved daredevil pilots extraordinaire from Gillespie Airfield, who come all the way from San Diego, California, and the only pilots who will fly my next presidential election banners and who fly over Glendale City Council meetings all the time. Thank you, pilots, and you know who you are. Furthermore, I want to thank all our law enforcement chopper pilots, i.e. LAPD, Glendale PD, and the Sheriff's Department, along with the valuable U.S. Coast Guard. God knows they need a lot of funding, too. Along with all our military branches and military aviators and our military leaders, i.e. Commander John Allen and Defense Secretary Leon Panetta, who are doing a remarkable job, not to mention they are absolutely phenomenal speakers, and who provide America with our democratic national sovereignty. And our commercial airline pilots, co-pilots, and engineers who provide America and the world with a free-flowing commerce. What I especially love about all our pilots, i.e. private, commercial, military aviators, and law enforcement chopper pilots, not only have they contributed to the public safety and its American citizens, but they are highly coordinated, highly gifted, and have excellent command of the English language. You'll never hear these librarians talk about that. They also have exceptional camaraderie. They are thrill-seekers. They are highly disciplined with due diligence, punctuality, a flair, and exuberance for life. They are spontaneous combustion personalities. God dang, I love that. And they treat life with zest, zeal, and sanctity. They truly are a bundle of joy, not to mention they represent life, liberty, and justice. That's why I adore them so much. Thus, I'm asking all pilots to please be careful under precarious weather conditions. You'll probably end up flying IFR, i.e. wind shears and heavy fog densities. If we need to ground them, for God's sakes, ground the bloody aircraft and keep our pilots safe. Next item, this is a matter of principle. I'm putting the following on notice again. President Barack Obama and Michelle Obama and the administration, the United States Supreme Court justices, the FBI, the INS, Homeland Security, the Department of Justice and Eric Holder, ICE, all judges and administrative law judges, the Latino racists and bullies, gangbangers in uniform from the inept and non-responsive Glendale Police Department, with the exception of the chopper pilots, and the Latino racists and also politically biased, they are City Attorney Michael J. Garcia and Mayor Frank Quintero. But that's a no-brainer. Since I have been subjected to ongoing censorship, interrogations, and continuous interruptions by Mayor Frank Quintero and his co-accomplice, City Attorney Michael J. Garcia, and in the violations of the Brown Act Open Meeting Law, and yet I have committed no crimes. But I come here because I believe in myself and my abilities, not to mention that I respect myself enough to fight these Latino bullies and the Glendale City Council, who Glendale is not, again, fairness. There is no fairness in Glendale, nor is there equality, but selective targeting and abusing individuals. Keep, I like your smug look, mayor. And all this because I choose to dissent against these Latinos políticos who are pandering to the criminal illegal aliens and also gangbangers. You see, I'm not a gangbanger. I ain't illegal. My family and I didn't swim the Rio Grande. Thank you. And so I choose to follow the right road, mayor. And that is to stand up for what I believe in, not committing a crime, not committing any crimes, not using any violence, not bullying anybody, but simply coming here, whole and intact, with my marbles intact, and speaking as I know I should, rightfully so, in this open meeting while Officer Shine, who didn't shine at all, came to censor me and interrogate me. And that's unacceptable. In America, God knows I have earned every bit of my freedom. It didn't come free. Freedom is not free. And so, again, I do not pander to the illegals, and I do not pander to the gangbangers. And this city, Glendale, is now a zone of danger. Call it what it is. It is dangerous. You've got gangbangers and criminal illegal aliens because of the employers hiring them. And I've mentioned them before. Again, if I were to run for mayor or president, I'll tell you one thing. I don't pander to no illegal or gangbanger, and I don't want the stinking vote. And I would suggest that to Mitt Romney. And again, Barack Obama, you did not provide Americans with safety. And again, I remind you, no amnesty, no asylum, deportation, deportation, deportation. Thank you so very much. Mayor Kurt Pringle, we love you.
Okay, that ends oral communications.
Just in the spirit of fairness, I would like to say that I also voted for the pension increases in 2000.
Right on.
I don't want to be left out.
I was going to mention that, Mr. Manukian.
He might as well join the crowd. And move that we adjourn in the memory of?
David Hobbs.